And I'm going to ask if you would reach over to the seat next to you that's empty and press the present button so in case somebody comes while you guys are in executive session. We don't have any voting issues later. Thank you. Mayor Fowler. Mayor Prokets Snyder.
Here.
Would you push your button for me this way?
Alright, thank you.
Councilwoman Moreno.
Here.
And Councilwoman Benson, and I'll note for the record at this time, Mr. Benson is not here. Councilwoman Carson, again, I'll note for the record that Councilwoman Carson is not here at this time. Councilwoman Teeter.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson, the president is not here. Councilwoman Baccal Downey.
Here.
And Councilwoman Bullard.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, could you have the form?
Thank you very much. We've arrived for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance, and it's been requested by Mayor Prokets Snyder that you make a short statement before.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that as we take our moment of silence this evening, that we remember the tragedy that happened in Tucson, and our hearts and prayers are going out to Councilwoman, the judge, the nine-year-old girl, everyone who was injured or killed, the staff members, just everyone that's been involved, and their family and friends in such a terrible time so far. Our hearts and prayers are with them and their families. Thanks.
At the ready to be to the right of the United States of America, and to the Republic where religion stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will now undertake a motion going to executive session. You can use the motion to have it on your agenda, and my little screen is not working, so, oh, here we go. Ms. Snyder?
Yes, I move to go into executive session for the following purposes: one, to receive legal advice in contract concerning the E47 Public Highway Authority pursuant to CRS 24-6402B; and two, performance evaluation of the city manager pursuant to CRS 24-6402F and I.
Mr. Moreno, second motion? I have a motion and a second going to executive session, so if you're discussion, see none, press the voice vote. All those in favor, super popular, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes, we're going to executive session. We should be back after this period. Thank you. I'm sure there are other requests or suggestions we could add, but we should remain with these three items. I don't have our copies printed out, but if I could. Yes, you are, it doesn't matter. Please, we get this right up here, we will be. Good evening, everybody. We're back from our closed session, which is fine. We've got local, but I would like to impose on Ms. Snyder to make her comments again before we actually get started. The audience introductions.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Earlier this evening, since we had our meeting a little early, we had the moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, but I'd just like to ask if we could have another moment of silence in regard to the horrible tragedy that happened in Tucson, Arizona, and our hearts and prayers and thoughts going out to Councilwoman, the judge, that precious nine-year-old little girl, all the others that lost their lives or were injured in situations and families. It's just a terrible, terrible thing, so if we could just have a brief moment of silence before we continue to be enamored of those individuals, I thought that would be a really good thing, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. And tell her to put yourself out there in the public area. First thing that we're going to do next is audience introductions. If you would please pass around the microphone. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder.
Andy Thomas.
Andy Thomas.
Bruce Allen.
Bob Lauter.
Marlon Hill.
David Sain.
Tom Corra.
Louis Pata.
Julie Bishop.
Jean Lappel.
Bob Lauter.
Bruce Adams.
Rick McCann.
Davis McCann.
Phil Parker, chief police.
Ms. Ryan Cordero, governor of Texas.
Ron Howard, innovation technology.
Greg Collins, public work director.
Thank you very much. Kind of nice to see some faces we haven't seen before. Andy, come on in. Mr. Lewis, we missed you. Not that the rest of you are not important, but some of these people, we don't see a lot, and it's nice for you to come on down. Next item is citizen communication, and our roster is made available with interest to the council chambers for those who wish to trust counsel. First one is for non-agenda items, and the second one was for an action item that's listed on the agenda. When I call your name, and we only have one person tonight, please come forward, state your name and address for record. And councilors are reminded not to engage in discussion or debate, may ask pedifying questions, express concern when appropriate. The management of generally assigned staff members to get the necessary information to solve issues. Mr. Zeiler, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Ray Lauter. Name is Bob Lauter, 6321 Pontiac Commerce City. A couple of meetings ago, I gave a few people a letter concerning the Kirby downtown area, and that's what I asked about. I asked about the patio that was built on the side of the building for the resource center that built off the top of that building. It, to me at the time, I thought it may be part of Muddy's coffee shop. I did receive a phone call from the city and said, "No, it was not part of Muddy's coffee shop." That it was pre-planned even before that was going to be a coffee shop. So, was content with that, but however, when we drive by the place, there is a sign, a fenced-in area with a gate, which gives the appearance right off that it belongs to the coffee shop. Then, second of all, there's a sign there on the inside that says, "Muddy's Coffee Shop, 3111," and all that sort of stuff, which really gives the appearance. I feel that sign should be removed or tell the people to remove it, and the city threw up a sign saying, "This is public domain." And also, there's chairs, plastic chairs sitting inside of there, that are just inviting that to what they're doing. Then I looked, today I went up and looked, and there's another area like that on the different places. Monaco and Elrodine Drive or whatever is there. I said, "Well, that was part of another public domain thing." It appears also that that belongs to the business. Let me see what else is booked out here. Oh, they threw them up in front of that area right there where the resource center and that whole complex building. There is concrete tables and seating area. Now, if that is private domain, private property or whatever, not city property, I can't understand why the city is putting all this stuff in. Why have they built this rest area or whatever you want to call it? Whether it's grant money or whatever money, it's tempting us wrong. And if it is public domain, then there's a sign in front of Muddy's also that says, "This property is for Muddy's only. All others will be told me." There's something wrong up there. This needs to be looked at very carefully by somebody in the city and say, "Hey, we'll go by it, but we're not going to do it." So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Flannery. Okay, we handle this, I think I understand what he's saying, and we should probably look into it.
We will have to.
And then somebody will get back to Mr. Zeiler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Just for information, just to enter it so that it's here, I think, I'm not sure if you all of councilor can't get a copy of this letter? Okay. It came, I guess, to the city attorney, the city manager? Who got it? City clerk got it. And she will get a copy to the council, just for our information, and someone from the staff will handle that. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item is consent agenda, but before I start, if Mr. Taylor wanted to make a comment about the consent agenda before I start it.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. In order to avoid removing the item from the consent agenda, because I don't feel that's necessary, there was, or there is a correction that is needed in the ordinance that adopted the various sections of the Commerce City Revised Municipal Code. And on page fifteen, section twelve dash six thousand eight, page one, there's a reference to one ounce of marijuana. That should be two ounces of marijuana. That's a correction that needs to be made. Otherwise, I don't think it's necessary to remove it unless some council member wants to discuss it further, but that's a request administratively we'd like to make to the ordinance.
Any comments from council on that particular item before I start on the consent agenda? Seeing that there's just two, okay, there's two items on the consent agenda. We're seeing, councilor reminder, I just think you're moving the consent agenda in discussion purposes, a request of council. So you wish to do that, seeing that you have information, Ms. Teeter?
Never mind.
Mr. McAdams. Mr. McAdams. Move to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Teeter.
Second motion.
Okay, so you moved it second to approve the consent agenda, and the city attorney would hear the fact.
Title of ordinance eighteen forty-eight reads, "An ordinance amending various sections of Commerce City Revised Municipal Code." Title of ordinance Z seven eight one dash zero two dash zero four dash zero six dash ten, an ordinance approving the PUD zone document entitled Amendment Number Four of the Union PUD Zone Document attached thereto as Exhibit Eight, governing the property located at the northwest corner of Honig Fourth Avenue and Chambers Road, Commerce City, Colorado. That's the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion and a second, so you can read the title, request of more. No more than this, if the consent agenda is passed, thank you very much. Next item is rental property task force reported recommendations. Mr. Flannery, if you would introduce staff who would be able to report their recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Mr. McRae is going to be presenting this.
Evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I was asked by the rental property task force to facilitate the task force meetings. I was not a member of the task force. I was asked by the task force to facilitate their meetings, and in that role, the task force also asked me to present their recommendations to the city. First, I'd like to acknowledge the members of the rental property task force. These folks were appointed by the city council to serve on the task force. What you see on the screen is a list of all the task force members. A number of them are here this evening, and I wondered if I might ask those members of the task force that are here to stand in a place so that they can be recognized. As the city council is aware, the topic of rental property certification is, to put it mildly, a fun one. It is a difficult issue that generated strong motions and strong opinions on both sides of rental certification issue. But I have to tell you that the task force conducted themselves in excellent manner. In my opinion, the task force had the correct discussions about the right topics, and even though at times the discussion dispirited, the task force always conducted themselves in respectful manner in a way that the group was able to arrive at some very reasonable recommendations. So I wanted to, as a way to acknowledge and thank the task force members for their service, but also for how they conducted themselves during the task force meetings. As a little bit of background, the city council created a rental property task force charter back during the summer. In September, the city council appointed members to the task force, and then over the course of October, November, the task force met four times. And at the conclusion of those four meetings, the last twenty meetings, on the twenty-third of November, the task force developed following recommendations. First and foremost, the task force does not believe that rental certification is appropriate at this time. The task force does believe they're event that creating the Commerce City tenants' bill rights. The task force also would like to explore the possibility of formulating a specific definition of probable cause for any injury. The task force would then like to review, and also like the input of other stakeholders in the before presenting in fact to the city council, have some additional comments about this particular recommendation. The next is that the task force recommends a comprehensive education program for tenants. During the task force meetings, we saw some excellent educational materials that have been developed by the state and by the Colorado Apartment Association, who like to use those materials, adapt them for our use here in Commerce City as a way to better educate tenants in Commerce City. And then finally, the task force recommends that the city improve and simplify the ways that tenants can bring problems to the city's attention. One of the challenges we had during the task force meetings is trying to identify, is there a problem with the condition of rental property in the city of Commerce City? We'd like to improve the ways for tenants to bring problems to the city's attention as a way of better understanding whether there is or isn't a problem with the condition of rental property in the city. As I mentioned, the task force spent quite a bit of time at the last meeting on the winter time there talking about probable cause. Because the condition of rental properties, problems may occur inside the structure. It's sometimes hard for city staff and members of the board to know if there are problems inside each level. The task force have discussed whether it might be beneficial to create a more specific definition of probable cause so that city staff have a better tool for gaining entry to certain problems that the city believe are leading to problems. The task force included the recommendation of exploring reading this definition of probable cause, but asked city staff to review this idea with the city attorney's office. As a result of those discussions, city staff has additional points to mention. We're not sure that defining probable cause will provide much assistance in gaining entry to dwell on purely belief-based violations. Probable cause, the definition of probable cause is a constitutional issue that has extensive case law, and ultimately, whether we satisfy the very probable cause to gain entry under the expressions of the judge, whether it be the city's municipal judge or the district judge. We did however find language in the line development code that does discuss the issue of search warrant, supervised guidance to staff on what we need to demonstrate in order to gain entry and still protect a property's constitutional rights. One problem that staff have, and we'll likely explore with the rental property task force, is whether placing this line development code language in the property maintenance code might be of some benefit. Continuing, this is the language in the line development code that we were focusing on. The line development code, which was significantly rewritten and adopted in March of two thousand and nine, includes this section. Again, the body staff sometimes, and what was particularly of interest to us is the second sentence of this paragraph. It says, "Established probable cause, the city agent shall not be required to demonstrate a specific knowledge of the violation issued, but must show some factual or factual circumstances that the cause of ordinary proofing persons believe that a violation exists." This is not quite to the extent of creating this definition of probable cause, but does provide staff and the judge in mind in reviewing the staff's request for a search warrant. Some guidance, at the same time, it provides some latitude, while also giving us some guidance. So this is staff's suggestion, council, and to rental property task force, it just might be a better alternative than trying to correct the definition of probable cause. Now, having presented the recommendations and shared staff's thoughts about the probable cause concept, what would the next step be for the city council? What are we seeking for the city council to see? First and foremost, these recommendations are just recommendations that take some time to implement. So if the city council is supportive of these recommendations and agrees with them, it might be appropriate to direct the task force and city staff to continue working together to implement the recommendations, which in some cases might require coming back to the city council for additional action. The alternative, the city council could modify some of the recommendations before directing staff and the task force to proceed differently. The task force was very much interested in remaining involved in helping to implement these recommendations. They feel very strongly about them, and would absolutely like to be part of the movement. And staff is very supportive of the recommendations. Again, our process was very good, the task force had a very good discussion, and arrived at a proper recommendation given the seriousness of this position. With that, I would certainly be happy to answer the questions that you might have about the recommendations. Okay, as you've seen earlier, there are a number of members of the task force here as well. I'm sure we'd be happy to help and answer questions if council felt that was appropriate.
Come in, Mr. Council. Okay, seeing that, you already answered this, but when I read it originally, my concern was definitely probable cause. Every case is different, and we get to the part where we're trying to formulate what is going to be, somebody's to come home that's not fit that particular set. Looking at what you've got here, it would appear that these are items that would be done by staff, is that correct? Bill of rights, or who would do these last steps?
What we consider doing is developing ways to implement these things. The tenants' bill of rights is an excellent example. Currently, there is a tenants' bill of rights at the state level, so we certainly look at that, determine what might be appropriate for Commerce City, review staff's recommendations with the task force, and bring forward a specific action for council to take on that recommendation.
Okay, Mr. McAdams?
I just wanted to thank the folks that participated in this task force. I think there was a moment when this discussion began where we were just rushing to, in a rash, and it was like a number of members that were, we were talking about the business and the market, and it was great that this group was able to come together, have the discussion, the level of detail they did, and ultimately become a visible recommendation that we can launch in order to fire, try to put much better on what is appropriate, like we moved them all in that direction, and ultimately, help ensure that the management are in a safe and environmental conditions. So I just wanted to, I think, very wanting Mr. Flannery to help in chair this group.
Mr. Moreno?
I just want to say, as a member of the task force who attended every goes extremely, doesn't look like surprise, at the agreeableness at which the task force found law, and were able to work on some of these issues. I think it's a very smart move on staff's part to move away from the probable cause issue and instead look at language for the line development code. So I recommend that, I think that the city should charge the task force with implementing this because I think we want to encourage that broad, different perspectives that they bring in implementing these issues. I think it's really important that we make sure that we keep that in place. You know, the only thing that the task force ultimately did disagree on was the probable cause, so I really encourage that when staff has gone forward, and I would just encourage the public to support giving this back to the task force to look at the fire to build the implementation.
Yes, I do want to thank the task force. I believe it was four years ago, and this was brought up from the Rossical ordinance, and we had probably three hundred people, you know, down our throats and all, and by forming this task force with a diverse group of people, nine more citizens and all, the dialogue and working together has come up with these recommendations, and I'm very proud of all of you for all your effort. Thank you.
Yes, first of all, I want to commend the community board for his handling of the segmentation of our bees. He did an excellent job, Brian. Well, and all the members of the task force who were attending the bees, I was very pleased with what we relied at. I think that one of my main concerns was the habitability, what is good for human habitation. The state law contains a pretty good definition of how human habitability is defined in our bill of rights, the tenants' bill of rights that we created here follows that definition, and maybe modifies it to some extent. I think that's going to be a great thing for our city. I think we made a lot of progress in this area. And do we need a motion to direct these staff to receive the task force recommendations? If so, why would we make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, in fact, I had some proposed wording for the motion to make clear for the record what we're doing this evening. My recommendation is...
Before you actually got people here and just, you know, he's a little ahead of himself. Mr. Snider?
Yes, I just wanted to echo what the other councilors were saying, and thank you to Brian and the group, and all of the people that participated in the meeting meetings, and the time that you put into it. It's very much appreciated, so thank you very much.
Ms. Carson?
I just also want to thank everybody that did participate. I actually enjoyed sitting on that task force, right? It was always a very healthy, energetic conversation that took place. I think we all did very good, respecting and honoring each other's views and opinions, so, and I could see Megan coming in late. Megan, thank you. You helped direct us along the way. Everything that you brought was very valuable, and Brian would be without you. So, thanks to everyone.
Mr. Moreno?
Just before we make a motion for to proceed, if it's acceptable to council, I would like to extend an invitation to task force members to recognize share a few words on the process of the recommendations.
Very well, we should come forward to say something. Please. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Megan Story with the Department of Administration of Metrodemonstration. I apologize a little bit. I just wanted to echo what everyone was saying up here, and I just wanted to also say that I'm just very impressed with what the city handled this issue. It can be a very contentious issue, and I've seen other cities handle it less well, we'll put it that way. And so I'm very, so I'm very pleased, I'm very pleased that the city of Commerce became to all parties before taking on this issue, and I think it, like everyone said, I think it went very well, and I think it came up with some great recommendations, so I'm looking forward to proceeding. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to go forward? Seeing that, voting Mr. Gaylor, and then back to Mr. Benson, or does he need to make the motion and then you'll write it, or House's word? You'll vote first?
House has suggested, and if Mr. Benson or any other council member decides, some different wording would be more appropriate. My recommendation, hearing what's been said this evening, would be a motion to direct staff to continue working with the rental property certification task force to implement the recommendations presented by the rental property certification task force, and then return to the city council with any required opposed action.
Mr. Benson?
Well, I think we should leave out the word certification, just hope that our team have the rental property task force, okay? Whatever the actual name is.
That work for you, Mr. Gaylor?
That's certainly fine. In fact, the word certification isn't a part of the actual name, so the rental property task force then would be the appropriate terminology. Thank you.
Mr. Benson, will that be okay with you then?
Yes, I would so moved with that change.
Okay, Ms. Peters?
Thank you for the motion.
Okay, a motion in a second to prove that as granted with the correction or change that Mr. Benson suggested. A voice vote is okay. All those new voters, if you'd like to say a aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks to everybody. This was painless, now you've gone through everything that we've gone through, you should all be thanked. Mr. Moreno, you can run it.
Yes, there is just one more issue on that topic. Seeing as how the task force will proceed after tonight, there was an issue with one of the residents that they didn't make all the meetings, so my recommendation in that task force was to appoint Mr. Lewis as a regular member, since he has the distinct advantage of being both landlord and resident in Commerce City, is to appoint him as a regular resident member. I just wondered if there's any challenge on council with that, if we could appoint him as a regular member, as a regular voting member.
I really like it. It's a nice project. Anybody have a problem with Mr. Lewis getting in? You've seen none, you're applying, you're putting them on the-
Great, thank you.
Okay.
So then the man has to reply to the council by consent to appoint Orville Lewis as a regular member.
Do you need a motion on that too?
There might be.
Okay, Mr. Moreno, you want to make that motion?
Move to install Orville Lewis as a regular voting member as occupying the place of resident on the rental property task force.
Okay, Ms. Peters?
Thank you for the motion.
Give a motion in a second to approve, approve Mr. Lewis. All those opposed signify this aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Next item is administrative business, and it's some of your requests on action from the council. This is not a request for service, we handle on city reg. Ms. Peters, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Snyder?
I have a question. Basically, one of my constituents called me when the city newspaper came out and was explaining about the new trash can ordinance, or the rules that are going along, having to have the trash cans out of public view except around trash day. This particular constituent is handicapped, and her 82-year-old neighbor assists her getting her candy down to the drive-in back there. So she's wondering, if you're in a situation where you're handicapped, and in her particular instance, she's in a wheelchair, how does she go about, there's just no way for her to get her trash cans out of sight. And so that did make me start thinking about people who, you know, I'm sure for the most part, most people can figure out a way to get them put away, but what do we do, or how can we assist with people that, you know, aren't able to do it because they might be handicapped or have issues, would be able to do it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and council, Mayor, Lieutenant Snyder, actually, there's a, this one I think came to our attention, and there's one or two other ones, and we're actually going back and looking at that ordinance, and maybe coming back to you with some modifications. Typically, the usual rental ordinance, usually within the first six to eight months, you come back with adjustments, because it's just like a building, it settles in.
Right.
And there are issues sometimes with it. And so what the civic room and community development is going to do is, we're going to go back and look in and evaluate some of those specific issues, and try to come back and address this particular issue with the actual oxygen in the house, but also look at the other one. But we want to come back and maybe look at feedback with the council on amendments to that, to that code, because there may be, there's some other issues with replacement of them, and just the way it works around the house. We don't want to be overburdening, burdening, we also want to unify the area as well.
Absolutely. And I can understand that. You know, being in the South myself, you know, there are many homes that don't have garages at all, and so there's not always an area that's, you know, easily accessible to put the trash cans. So I can understand that, you know, while we're trying to do our best to, you know, make the city look as nice as possible, we do have to look out for people that have issues. So I have the information of this individual, like if it's Mr. Mike Green, after the meeting, and maybe he can contact or let her know, you know, if that's okay.
No, we're out with that.
And my second thing is, totally different issue, is about the snow. I certainly appreciate that the city snow crew was out and about getting everything taken care of, but I happen to live right on 60th, and being that I can't do the snow shoveling myself anymore, obviously, I have to have a family member or a family friend come over and do it for me, and he had just come with a snow blower and done all of it, and mine wouldn't be fair amount of property because I have the corner. And about an hour and a half later, here came the plow truck, and I don't know if it was city or state, CDOT, I'm not sure, but it was more than likely the city. And here it came, and it threw back on the sidewalk all of the snow, so half of the property looks like it had not been shuffled at all. And so my question about that is, I would sure hate to wake up the next day to a violation on my front door when I already had someone come over and help me take care of that, so I don't think that I should have to be worried, and I'm sure I'm not the only person on the corner property that this happens to. How does you two serve, so you understand what I mean?
I talked to them today about that.
Did you talk to them today about that? So I know I'm not the only one. It's very frustrating to get out there, buy your free weather, get your shoveling done, and then turn around and have the city come by and throw all their snow back up on your street or your sidewalk. So we need to figure out how to, to address that, and I appreciate Mr. McCann agreeing that, that you agree with me on that. Sure that there are many more out there, and there are probably experiencing that as well. So any ideas or suggestions that we can do to make that better would be great. Thanks.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, I believe, and I may be wrong about this, but I think about a month ago, we discussed the possibility of an ordinance that would require foreclosing vendors, pay the water bills, and they'd keep the grass green. Have we made any, is my recommendation correct, I have made any progress on that, Mr. Christian?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Stopp?
Evening, members of council. As I recall, Mr. Benson, we made reference to the city of Aurora having a similar ordinance. We've been researching that ordinance in Aurora, and talking to folks in the city of Aurora to see how well that's functioning, so we'd like to have a report back to you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
I have two requests for reports that we could perhaps put on future study item agenda. One of them actually does have to do with the snow as well, and taking a look at the city's snow removal plan. Not necessarily, I mean, everyone would like to have their individual street plowed, that's just not feasible, but I did have a couple of citizens raise a concern about, for example, when they go to the water department to pay their water bill, and it's very difficult to get there with the snow, because that's not on the city's primary streets, that's not considered a priority street. But, so maybe looking at amending the snow removal plan, to look at certain community buildings, maybe the streets plowed in front of those. So that's one. The second is to maybe have a study item on, as a couple of business owners have expressed a little bit of concern about the corporate pricing structure of Aurora, so if we could kind of get a report back on what that corporate pricing structure is, and maybe look at some alternatives to that, so. Thank you.
Going along with Mr. Moreno's, I know that you've had that before, and I think the answer that comes back would be good. Why, we just didn't get it, everybody, sorry, sir. Ms. Peters?
Yes, this is a big request. Jerry, I need your attention. Last night, I took a taxi home from DIA, and northbound on Tower, the taxi driver was scared to death to go there. Snowy night, blizzard, everything. He said, "Taxi drivers don't like to drive here at this start," and I got to thinking, "It is start, we have no street lights." I know that's going to be very costly, I mean, the 2,000 budget is already set, but if we wait till that is widened, we could be waiting for a very long time. And we are, council, okay, the lights on Highway 2, even though it was on by CDOT, because, and it still hasn't been widened. So if someone could check into the possibility of what the cost would be, we have that beautiful sign there, and yeah, at least 96 have light.
Got the old one.
Oh, anyway, it would be, you know, a safety issue to, maybe for next year's budget or something. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, city manager, I have a problem. I received a phone call again, and it's probably the third or fourth that I've received in the last year. Apparently, the Catholic Church, the one on 72nd, they rent out the hall for various groups. I don't exactly know what the criteria is for being able to rent that out, but I know they rent alcohol during weekends to different groups, and the homes behind it are having a lot of issues with the noise. I guess their parties, they're loud. This particular individual complains to me, and then another individual complains to me within the same week about that. So I don't know how that works, what the rules or regulations are, but it's, you know, not enough to be, you know, bothering the residents on that block. And since there's more than one that's brought that to my attention, it must be getting kind of loud. And I know as summer comes, you know, which is not going to come fast enough for us, but when summer does come, it does tend to become more and more of a problem. So throughout my time on council, I've had this issue often on. So is there somewhere you could speak to, I don't know if there's a father that's over there in charge of that, or whoever's in charge at the church, that we could discuss that with, or how to talk with? That'd be great.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Mayor, Lieutenant, and Snyder, we can check to see how many calls have been made, especially to PD, in response to complaints, but also we can probably go out and actually meet with the member priest.
That'd be great. Yeah, I just want to kind of monitor what's going on with the residents, because those houses do back right up to the church on that back side, and so since I used to live right in that neighborhood, I know how it gets over there, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Benson? Yes, I'm going to echo what Ms. Peters said. I was out in the same area Saturday evening, and everything was blizzard going on, and I noticed that at the time, that one was parked in lights in the unit south, and the light, there was no light, too, including in past painting in the unit north. There was no light either. I don't know whether we have money to do something about it, but I don't know what street lights cost, but it is very dark out there. Maybe you don't have a blizzard going on. That's all.
Thank you, sir. This might be something to put into our meeting coming up on priorities. This would be a good place to pick this up. Any extra reports, and Mr. Snyder? Directly to you first.
Let's be in the air. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you would, I would like to ask Ms. Ryan Cordero to come up very quickly and give you a quick rundown of the legislative tenants. And I have been asked by a member or two, maybe how to plan for that week in March, and I think the March, the week ends in, on the 18th. Typically, we won't have many meetings on Friday, so if you're looking at planning your trip, I would plan not to stay unless you have other business beyond the 18th. Typically, I would recommend you fly back on the afternoon of the 17th, or the morning of the 18th, or sometime during the 18th, because Friday, the congressmembers usually come back home to their districts anyway, so I wouldn't recommend.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you know, tomorrow, the governor will be sworn in, and on Wednesday, the legislative session will begin. I wanted to go over with you very briefly over the legislative liaison policy statement for, for me, that's basically the guiding principles by which I operate as I'm doing the work of the city down in State Capitol. There's an introduction there, but basically, what makes it important to have this document and have you approve and add or subtract from it is so that when there's a piece of legislation and there is action that needs to be taken quickly prior to a presentation to the council, I have basic principles that I can guide in, and I have those discussions with the city manager, and I'm able to educate down there. So as major policy areas, I put as a primary economic development. This year, for everyone in Colorado, every city, pretty much, it's all about jobs, jobs, jobs. So, and I know that we're no different in that sense, so as per city council's direction and expressed priority, County City will support state actions to provide adequate funds and staff for a strong multifaceted program to promote the economic vitality of the state. Furthermore, County City will advocate for and collaborate with legislators, government entities, and other municipalities to encourage the creation of jobs in our city and for our residents. We will oppose any state action that would conversely affect our city's ability to attract or sustain new economic development. From there, I went on to municipal development and land use. Of course, we would support legislation or rulemaking that would sustain our ability to make decisions on our municipal development and land use, and oppose ruling or legislation that would take away from the city's ability. In terms of local control, municipal home rule, it is our belief that in order to consider local conditions and address local desires, community issues and needs should be addressed locally. State and federal government interference and undermining home rule and local control. Therefore, County City will support all legislation and/or initiatives that are in our authority on local control and home rule, and conversely will oppose legislation and early initiatives that are in local control and home rule. Conversely, any legislation or initiative that negatively impacts directly or indirectly the city's ability to and authority on local control and home rule will be actively challenged. On use, state and federal mandates, same kind of principle. State fiscal play, that's going to be a major area we'll be focusing on to make sure that there are not further diversions from the general fund that normally would support our general fund, that those don't continue or don't increase. Sales and use taxes, same principle. And lastly, water. So I just wanted to get a sense from the council that you're all in agreement with those tenants, and if you have anything you would like to add, I would be more than happy to take that right now.
Comment from council, Mr. Mayor?
I think in general, this is good.
I think in general, this is good. It's nice to start the session with this outline. I think the only thing that you both had to chat about is, is missing is any position on your expectation, your expectation priorities. Obviously, we know the state position on quarter revenue modification against the prepared bridges as well and the discussion that the city that my name, but obviously policy.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I, in my mind, most of the things that come up related to transportation down at the state legislature have to do with a funded mandate and so. Somehow in my head, that was covered, but I think it would hurt to, if I could, please start with that.
Please, sir. Thank you. It's not me, it's Snyder.
Thank you, Ms. I appreciate you putting this together for us and I agree that it all looks really good. One of the things that I sort of become the poster child on through the last eight years is CDBD funds and continuing to ask for the support of that. That's the community development block grants. That money is very, very important for the county and for the city. So I would like to ask that that be on our list as well, just to remind our senators and congressmen that that's very important, that we ask that they continue to fund those grants. If we could add that, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think there are some solid priorities. I think right, right in mind with what I've heard is going to be the tenor of the upcoming session. And considering that I'll be back there working for another session, I would be very excited to have the next couple of minutes.
I just wanted to bring up a few more things. In terms of mandates, I know that many times we talk about, well, trying to have influence and to have things happen in a certain way. And that's certainly what the final outcome looks like. I wanted council to have a good sense of the kind of work that we do down at the state legislature. We find out, we try to find information, that's one of the key things that we do. We also provide information. Many times, our legislators need to know, they're not a direct source for what will be the outcomes or the consequences of legislation, whether those are intended or unintended. And that's, that's what they ask us for and we provide. And I generally only get that information through our city manager's office and also through our department directors. We build relationships and build support. And we work also through organizations like the Colorado Municipal League, our business contacts, the chambers of commerce, the Hispanic Chamber and the Metro Chamber, and also professional organizations that many cities that participate in. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's kind of how we're able to reach those legislators down at the state legislature. And then lastly, in regards to next week, we're going to have a presentation by our lobbying firm in Washington. Two weeks, the 24th, that's correct, I apologize. In two weeks, we're going to have a visit from our lobbyists and they're going to be giving a presentation on the state of legislative affairs in Washington. They would like to meet with those of you who are interested. They're going to be here all day on Monday. So if you have time available, maybe we can get together after this meeting and set up a time for you to meet with them individually. Just wanted to let you know so that I will be coming back to you biweekly or as appropriate as well to update you on legislative issues down at State Capitol. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, I think what we found successful in the past, legislation especially, is under migrant court have a standing I have, at least during the legislative session particularly, for this to have an opportunity, whether or not that week he uses it or not, but we want to put on the agenda under migrant courts so that, so that we know that he can come up and give you an update on different legislation that's going on, bills and things that you may want to bring up as well, on things that you heard on different bills. And then lastly for me, I wanted to let you know again, I sent an email on Friday, Michelle Halstead, who was senior communications official with CDOT, has been in, working, many of you know, working with Russ George down at the CDOT, is willing to be coming over to Commerce City on the 24th of January, it's her first starting date. And we're very, very lucky to get her over here from another big agency. So looking forward to your great things. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't need further proceedings, Mr. Mayor.
The only thing I have to report to is, last Saturday, we went to an event for outgoing speaker of the House chair, state speaker, that was a very well-attended event and it was very enjoyable and it was kind of melancholy, but we were saying goodbye to a wonderful speaker that did a lot for Commerce City, but we aren't saying goodbye, but we will see him again shortly. Thank you.
I just have a few things. Mr. Clement, you're in the audience. I want to thank you for ordering with CDOT and having that left-hand turn signal westbound 96 to Highway 2, please. It is remarkable how effective it is. Secondly, last Tuesday, the Land Authority had a training session with Karen Stevens to make our penalties a little bit stronger and not have this going to show how it's hearing. And lastly, to you, Mr. Benson, I was chair for Texas City now all Friday night. Unfortunately, they lost. But me, of course, everybody expects. My husband told me to tell you that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I just also want to, along with what Councilwoman, oh, sorry, Bullock said, I attended Terrence Pearl's farewell event. It was only a farewell to what he'd been doing. He was a remarkable speaker of the House and it was my honor and privilege to watch him work and he has done remarkable things for the state and will be missed, but he's still going to be plenty active. He's going to be doing some work for us here shortly and then also he's going to be involved with Children's Hospital, it's another very worthwhile things that he's going to be working on. So I learned a lot from watching him and I'm very proud of him and it was a great event. Thanks.
I also attended the farewell to the Speaker of the House and I think we all resonated the same sentiment that he was a good friend, would be canceled. And I don't think we will miss him, it is we will be, which in that way, great privilege. That's a very good point.
Yes, last week, I had the opportunity to travel to the Dallas former area and noticed that that's an extremely prosperous area of this country. It's just unbelievable how the session just doesn't seem to attach to that part. Had an opportunity to go to several meets in the base hotel that I've been in. Had an opportunity to go to another meeting on these buildings that I've been in and cover the city center all the way through to the soccer stadium. Has a TV screen, this picture in this room, and I'm joking, everything's bigger in this. I had a chance to observe a lot of statistics, every statistic. And I was extremely disappointed in that. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor. You have a word?
I did forget something from administrative that I will bring up next time, but I'm going to bring up the information now. We presently have some straw, no diamonds available to us before each and every meeting. We have only given $4 per person to pay for. I wasn't going to pay for the four pieces that are back there tonight. So at the next meeting, on the 24th, I'll have to decide whether we're going to cut through entirely or we're going to add more into the budget, but that's not for tonight. Remember, there's no meeting on the 17th. This week, probably the best water commission meeting that I've attended since we've started because we actually were able to sit down and get together and really work out a solution to some of our challenges when properties are outside or inside or coming into the city or not coming into the city. It was nice to sit in a group like that and really work through what was the real cause for what we were doing and what we were getting. It was phenomenal, it was wonderful. Let's see, the rag meeting, air quality is, you know, I should probably not say this on the air, but I'm going to anyway. They're getting to the point where they, I don't know how many of you ever met, but I've talked a little comments, but we're getting to that point, we want to get rid of the people and just let the animals back. It's the only way we're going to make those numbers that the feds have given us. Also, it's been all day Saturday, Metro Mayor's retreat, talking about what the priorities are going to be for Metro Mayor and it's going to be similar to what they've been for the past three years, transportation, health and wellness. But that's where we are. As notice to the council on the city, I will not be attending in March in Washington DC. For that trip, I would assume, I would expect that Mayor Potam Snyder will be taking over all the duties as the mayor and will be more or less the figurehead person in Washington and she will be taking my place there. There's just other things that come up that are not going to let me go. Is there be no further business? Further business coming for this board? Council is over. Drive safe because I know the roads are going to be next year when we come in.